The allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, in our nation, under God, in the visible, in liberty, and justice for all.
Mr. Alder, would you call roll please?
Mr. Lautermill.
Here.
Salsa.
Here.
Sweger.
Here.
Mr. Thacker.
Present.
Steve.
Here.
Mr. Norris.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Okay, thank you everyone being present. The first thing we'll do is we'll look at the corrections of the journal for proceeding meetings if needed. And I think the first one we have is our February 3rd special meeting, and it is on our packet. Oh, it's in the back. Sorry about that. I should look at the table of contents. I could find it quicker, couldn't I? It is on page 28. So, once the council has had a chance to look at that, then I would accept a motion for that.
I move that we approve the minutes from the special call committee meeting from Friday, February 3rd, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made in second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. So, that's the first one. Now, the next one we have is on page 32, I believe, and it is the minutes for the meeting. Right here for the 7th. February 7th sunshine meeting on page 32. If you have a chance to look those over, then I'd accept a motion for that as well. Or any corrections.
President Thacker, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made in second. Is there any discussion? And make sure it's correct on the attendance on that too. So, I have down Aaron. You're not present that one, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So, all those in favor of motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the last minutes that we need to look at is the February 14th minute. It is on page 44. Take a moment to look those over, and I accept a motion for that. It was Valentine's Day, and I think it was a long meeting. We got a lot of activity on that meeting that night.
Mr. President, a motion to approve.
Motion been made. Is there a second?
My second.
Motion made in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, carries. So, the next thing we have on the agenda is number four. We have public comment. These are limited items not on tonight's agenda. If you come up and speak, please come to the podium, state your name, and then you'll have three minutes. You guys are under communications. Yeah. So, anybody from the public, because you're on the agenda. Yes, fine.
Good evening. With all due respect to everyone here, my name is Keith Katner. I have been a lifelong resident of Vigo County with the exception of my military service, which the Army did a service for me. I did no service for it. Why I am here is I have heard so much and seen so much conflict of interest occurring within Vigo County, specifically with some of our county count. And forgive me, I lose councilman commissioner. I lose that stuff because I'm passionate.
Well, we're the council and the commissioner.
I understand. Don't take my three minutes, Thacker.
I'm just helping you out.
Yeah, cool. I appreciate a slow pitch. The reason I am here is I've been retired two years. My family, a lot of you have heard the name Katner and Sons Electric. My father, a great man, built that business. But he liked so many of us. Great man that he had some screwed up kids. And I'm saying I'm not one of them, but he had some. I was on my own for 18 years here as an electrical contractor, visited that building inspector's office often until Wednesday. I need to let everyone know.
Address us.
Oh, I am here. I have been trespassed from this property. I have been told if I come here without notifying them, that I will be arrested. I have to notify them, and then they have to decide if I have valid business in this building. Today, last week, every time I come here, they were prepared. They were prepared sheriff's deputies here to intimidate me because I have a question of conflict of interest going on. We have a building inspector out there governing, an appointed position governing over competition. He says he's divested, same as Mr. Klinkenbeere. How much is divested? One last hurrah for me. I was ready to tire. I was going to wire a new home for deputy Dayton Hubener, Paul Hubener's dad. I put a service on the garage like I've done for 35 years. I called for an inspection. Our new building inspector who had been there just months comes out. Mr. Hubener, he won't, he won't, might not collaborate this because his son's a county employee. But Mr. Hubener introduces himself to the building inspector. I'd never spoken one word to the man. He walks up. Mr. Hubener goes, "This is my electrician," didn't say my name. I know who he is. And from there, it went downhill. I had to go back four times. I'm trying to tell him I'm competent, but Baze did everything he could to make me look silly so bad that I decided to kick. And to close, because I knew that this was going to bring retribution, I have two daughters here in Vigo County at North and Fucle. I get emotional now because I am called, "Dad, what are you doing?" I hear your name at work, at school. They're talking, being run on the scanner yesterday and again. And then my other daughter, in tears, in tears, calls me and says, "Dad, what are you doing?" They don't understand. This is my hill. This is where I stand. And where do you all stand? Because after what he did to me yesterday.
Face us, and we were talking.
After he did, what he did to me yesterday in the lobby, came charging across the room screaming like a maniac, threatening me, I would have been arrested. I've asked, okay, I'm sorry.
Wrap it up. Wrap it up. Now, here's the thing, and Mr. Katner, you're nice.
I am here under trespass.
Here's what I'm gonna tell you. As long as you're allowed to stay here at this meeting.
I choose not to.
I'm just telling you, you're welcome to stay here. I wanted to hear your point. If you have issues with conflict of interest, we are the financial body, but you asked to speak here, so I wanted to let you speak. But if you have any information that you want to forward to it, I would personally look at it for you. But I appreciate your time. I understand your passion, and thank you for.
And I do plan on being at all the meetings. And if they want to, you know, drip, 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 I've got a, today was, I needed a DD 214. Thanks, folks. I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. Mine? You can't hear me?
It's on.
It's, oh, how about now? I'll lean in a little bit. Okay, thank you. All right, so everybody's, everybody's got that. Do we have any other public comment? Any other public comment? Okay, we're, now we're going to move on to any, any comment from other elected officials or agencies of the county. Would anybody else like to speak under that before we move on to communications? Okay, thank you. Go ahead, communications. We have update the council in North, Terre Haute North High School Engineering Class wins of the wall bash project.
Hi, my name once again is Jason Gibbons. I live at 2256 Park Street. I've been at Terre Haute North one year, but I've been in the school corporation five. I have a new set of team to talk to you because I think you're going to have some questions.
Okay, great.
Hi, I'm Peyton Rowe. I'm a junior at North.
My name is Logan Wenzel. I'm a senior at North.
Okay, great. We're just here to ask if you have any other questions or any other requests of us before we go further with this. Yeah, I think, and I can always count on Marie for councilman Steve for her questions, so go ahead.
I think since we have talked last week, I think you see the excitement that we have of allowing students to continue to learn and potentially move forward. We discussed a little bit more, and us as the financial body, we can make a recommendation. But I kind of explained to you guys a little bit too, and I think President Thacker has as well, that it'll probably take the involvement potentially of like, depending on where we put it, parks or approval from commissioners as well. So, I don't know if anyone, Travis, I don't know if you have any questions who are here. But just for those who are watching, the engineering students have come up with a prototype too, and you go ahead and explain it just real quick, and then that way we can move forward on it.
Basically, it is a way to create clean, clean eco-friendly energy by a Vendery effect. Vendury effect, excuse me. Venturi.
Yeah.
Using impeller technology in a 80-foot tall, basically building, a structure with tubing moving through it to create airflow. And the vacuum would be able to generate enough energy to hopefully be able to pay and offset tax bills or electric bills or anything like that.
And so, we're going to try it out first. That's the stage that we're in.
We're just asking for an ability to give a prototype.
To potentially try it.
Yeah, and I think that, again, as I will echo, sometimes we get people that don't totally get what our limitations are. We are, as Councilman Steve says, a financial institution. I think here, I know I personally am supportive of what you, what your classes do in engineering. And I think it's great that you're looking to do something, and you're looking to use local workforce to do it, and you're getting some estimates. There's nothing better to learn than by doing. And as I am a product of an apprenticeship program, I feel very passionate about that too. And so, I think it's, I think we, we had you guys make the presentation last meeting, but I don't think we can do anything other than if we wanted to have a vote, just to show that we're support of you and have it. But I think it would be, depending on where the commissioners wanted to do something with this, that it would be either the parks or someplace that have an educational means to incorporate with your, with your desire to build a prototype.
And I know in talking, just in case for the commissioners, they potentially buy Hawthorne. There's the space by the maintenance area. But I know that would have to go either through you guys or the parks board. But we, there's some solar stuff there right now. So, do I make, it's a motion or a resolution?
Yeah, I think, I think that that would be proper. You could make a motion of support. It has no financial implications to it at this point, but it's just showing.
I'm not paying you, Logan.
Yeah.
Sorry, maybe Peyton, but not Logan.
But if there, does anybody else have any questions for the young men?
I just would like to say that I think you guys are terrific. You know, I'm all about saving the planet, about, I'm on the recycling. I'm on the solid waste board, and I just think you guys are fantastic, and I'm behind you all the way. But as soon as you're selling that stuff, I'm buying.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I hope that you don't find out like the rest of us have in our lives is there's a lot that goes behind the scenes in bureaucracy and in a process. I think it's an ambitious endeavor, and I'm very supportive of it.
And I think it's, you know, to echo, other than the education side of it, it's what we in government say a lot about trying to engage our young people. And that's what probably makes me the most excited. I've honestly known a lot of the students that were part of this, and I could not be more proud of them. So, I'd like to make a motion to show support for the Terre Haute North engineering students moving forward with support from the county.
Is there a second?
I seconded.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Surprise, you guys.
Okay, report from other committees. So, the only thing I know that we have, we have a committee that is the, the budget committee, which hasn't started meeting yet, so they don't have anything to report. And I don't have any new, anything new to report from the Baker Tilly. But if anybody has any questions, or if anybody on council would like to make a comment on any committee, we can do that this time. If not, we're going to move on. Number seven, do you have something?
And it might be a question for Kara, but I know that the documents in the department chair's hands now. Do we have a timeline of when the appeals process, just to give the rest of the council?
That's a good.
An idea of when we can move on with it.
Jada from Baker Tilly will be here on the fourth.
Grab that mic to you.
Jada will be here on the fourth, fifth, and sixth. It may be just her or someone with her, depending on. I'll be getting a form from Jada to send out, so everybody who wants to, to make an appointment with her will have a form to fill out so that they can gather their thoughts and the things they want to talk about. And then, if they call me after they get that form, then we'll set up like times so everybody will have an actual time to be here.
To be set.
Yeah. And then that way they can talk and, you know, argue their points and, and maybe, you know, argue their case to, to why they don't like what it is at current, so.
Okay. All right, that's perfect. So, hopefully, they will take advantage of that if there's questions or concerns they need to advocate for.
Yep. The die. Okay, then, no, nothing else from committees. We'll move to resolution ordinance other than appropriations. And the first one out of that is we have a, number one is a resolution of reallocation, 2023 dash four area planning out of series transfer. And so, that is one that we had at, we read it at this, at the earlier meeting, and we moved it forward to have a, to allow this transfer. I don't know if there's anybody here to speak on that, but if not, we'll accept a motion regarding that.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Is there a second on that?
A second.
Has a motion been made in second? Is there any other discussion? This one is on page six of those. If anybody wants to look at or have any questions, and if not, there's time here for a discussion. If you have it, it's, this is a, a service agreement for $800 for taking out the service equipment, moving to new equipment. Service agreement to new equipment. If all those, all those signify by saying aye, that's for this?
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay? Hearing none, motion carries. So, that moves us then to item number two, resolution 2023-5, expressing interest in real estate, appointing appraiser from the commissioners. The commissioners here, if anybody has any question for them, this is on page seven. I did add this to the agenda, and so.
I just want to correct you real quick. It's not in your book. It's the one that was passed out to you. Unfortunately, the one in the book says Juvenile Center. That's an old one. Just wanted to make sure that they were looking. So, the one that I had councilperson Harrison hand down to you, that is the one. And that is the one that was presented to you last week.
Okay, so it is, it's in our book on page seven, but we did just get an update on it with a correction, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
It is the same one you got last week. It's just the wrong one got put in this week's book.
Okay, so if there's, if there's not any questions, I would accept a motion at this time. So, move. Motion been made. Is there a second? Second. Motion made in second. Is there any other discussion? Motion been made in second. All those favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Now, I have an ad for you here. This is an ad that we had because of the discussion that we had. And it is in your packet that everybody was given, and it is a resolution for the ARBA. So, they. Terrible, I did that. So, this is a resolution number 2023-six, resolution for county council. So, this, if you remember this one, it was presented to us, and it came to us like as an ordinance, but we said that we were going to make it a resolution. It was advertised, and so we now have it here for you. And what they've done is where they had all the breakdown of all the different ones, it is really just into a resolution format, whereas the commissioners and whereas, and now therefore is formatted. So, what this is, is this is a, the format that we felt like that was appropriate for the council to handle because we'd asked for this from the council, for the council had asked the commissioners to have a plan. So, that, this is the resolution. And it, we went into detail last week with RJL solutions that say there is a plan of action. We would still have the opportunity at any time that before we do any appropriations, they have to come back in front of this committee or this board, and we have to vote on each appropriation. So, with that, if anybody has any questions, I see there's a camera on Mr. Schweitzer.
Stop it. So, I have an update. If you don't mind, Council President Thacker, I'd like to bring this to you guys as an updated plan of action. Last week, it was a one-page document. Now, I got a two. So, if I could provide that to you guys.
We're trying to get away from paper, but we haven't made it yet. Thank you. Is there any change on this, Mr. Schweitzer?
Oh, this is the action plan.
This is the action plan that Rachel Leslie.
Last one was kind of, it wasn't vague. It had a lot of details, but this really dives into the key details of each action item. That would have to be a process of before we even got to a point of coming to you guys, so just wanted to give you that.
Any questions from council? Mr. Schweitzer. So, yeah, it's just so everybody, if you didn't attend the meeting, so we asked for, and I mentioned a little bit ago, we asked for a plan of action from the commissioners when we had to do with this ARBA expenditure. They had been working on this in conjunction with RJL solutions. They came back and presented at last week's meeting the plan of action, and they had it broken down to the dollar amount each one. We had a presentation on this back in February. So, we have spent some time on it. We had, now, the thing I think, and I speak for myself on this one, is I think we all wanted to have the, the availability to say that they still had to come back to us before we appropriate any actual money to these. This is the guideline, if you will. These could change. The, this resolution that we have, we have, as for example, the money for housing, the ready, the ISU. All these things could change on the values on those. And when they do, they have to come back to us and ask for a appropriation before there's actually any money spent. At that time, they will show us who they're going to use for do this and how they're, how they plan to do this. So, this is a, a guide plan, if you will, a map. It doesn't mean that it will, it'll be interesting. Hopefully, we get to see this all the way through, and we see how it, how it comes from the planning stage to the actual implementation. So, I just, at my age, I just hope I live that long enough to see that and, and to see the, the impact that it makes on the community. So, is there any other questions regarding this? If, if it was so pleased the council, I would appreciate a motion, and then we can take action on this.
President Thacker?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the ARBA.
I make a motion to approve the ARPA.
Resolution?
Resolution.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So that's a motion second for resolution number 2023 dash six, resolution of the County Council of Eagle County, Indiana, in support of a plan for the dispersment of the American Rescue Plan funds. Any discussion before we vote? All those in favor please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving right along. We're now go to old business. This is ordinance related to appropriations. And the first one we have up is 2023 dash oh two, ROC 2023 dash one, clerk salary increase. So at this time, if you have any questions, I see the clerk, Mr. Newman's here. Yes, Mr. Newman, do you have anything you'd like to say before, or if you just want to answer questions?
If I need to, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
We've been doing this a while.
Appreciate it.
We won't have to.
And it's going to be, we're going to be able to address this and get in time for you to get to your son's game or practice.
Yeah, he's, he's pretty excited.
I can remember my kids being excited at that time.
It's, uh.
Now it's my great kids, so.
It's pretty amazing watching him get it.
It is.
He's a handful.
Do you guys have any questions for the clerk, Mr. Newman? Not, I would accept a motion.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to refer this to the Budget Committee for consideration to table the ordinance until it's brought back to the full council for consideration.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? So what the motion is, is to defer, refer this to the Budget Committee and it would stand tabled until brought back before the full council. It's not a denial. A denial then would have to wait one year before it would be able to be brought back up. So any discussion, further discussion on that? So motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next one, Mr. Newman, is the Salary Ordinance 2023 dash three, ROC 2023 dash one. It's the clerk deleting part-time positions and adding full-time positions. This is on page 11 of our packet. And on page 11, in this case, if I'm correct, Mr. Newman, you have four part-time positions that you've been unable to fill.
Correct.
And you are proposing to make those two full-time positions.
Yes, sir.
And that would be an increased cost of $70,854 that the council would need to approve and then have, once, if it is approved, then we'd have to do appropriation at the next month meeting. But it would allow you then to hire two more full-time. Is there any questions for Mr. Newman on this? If not, I accept the motion.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I make the motion that we approve this ordinance.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve motion ROC, I'm sorry, Salary Ordinance 2023 dash three, ROC 2023 dash one, clerk deleting a part-time position of four, adding a two full-time. Is there any further questions? Not any questions. I would take a vote of aye for?
Aye.
And the same against, motion carries. The third one is Salary Ordinance 2023 dash four, ROC 2023 dash one, Election Board Salary Increase. This is one that came before us. We talked about this one. And if you have any questions for Mr. Newman at this time, or if not, the chair would accept a motion.
This is one that, sorry, President Thacker, this is one that I feel should be adjusted at, or considered at budget as well. So I make a motion unless anyone has further discussion.
Motion been made. Is there a second to refer this to the Budgetary Committee? It'd be tabled at that time, I'm assuming. Is that correct?
Second.
Motion been made seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? That is, that motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Newman. Salary Ordinance 2023 dash five, ROC 2023 dash four, Juvenile Justice Center Salary Increase. We have two of them here. We have the Executive Director, Mr. Lautermel, here. If you have any questions for it, or do you have any statement that you'd like to make? He's here to answer any questions. Does anybody have a question for him? If I have no questions, I'd accept a motion.
Mr. President, I move that we approve Salary Ordinance 2023 dash oh five. This is in line with the needs of the Juvenile Center.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay. Okay, and hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. This one, the other one that Mr. Lautermel has in front of us is Salary Ordinance 2023 dash six, ROC 2023 dash four, Juvenile Justice Center Stipend and Retention Bonuses. Any questions of Mr. Lautermel? Any thoughts?
I have just a question to clarify. I know this was to bring up to what we had done, you know, to keep it consistent with the jailers. Is this one also a part of that, the stipend and the retention?
Yes. Yeah, this is something that they were the same before. Then we made a motion back when we did the jailers and the, last year, and the dispatch, but we did not do the ones that were at the same grade, being the Juvenile Justice Center on the stipends and retention bonuses.
Yes, and the stipend, a couple of years ago, we gave a stipend of $500 for the person that does all of our training, just asking that that increase a bit because we've come under some new guidelines from the state and there's a lot more training that's required. I also have an additional person that's doing all of our supplies and inventory. And so it's additional duty for her, so we'd like to be able to try to give them a stipend as well.
So this was.
That's the only thing extra that's not equal to paring with the sheriff's office.
And this was on page 14 of our documents. And if you remember, too, they were not asking for this to be retroactive. They were asking for this to go in effect. And on this document, it would go in effect if we pass it. It would go in effect as of March 15th. And then we would still have to do the appropriation for it since we didn't act on it before. So that's just a little information on that. So, so on that one, we would, is there any other discussion?
Mr. Lautermel, is this the retention bonus and stuff? This is the current amount of employees that you have? And this is a one-time retention bonus, or is this a yearly retention bonus?
Well, I mean, I'm asking for parity with what everybody else is getting. My understanding that dispatchers in jail have been getting it for a couple of years and my staff is not. And quite frankly, that's, that's not very fair. You know, I explained to, I explained to the council last, a couple of meetings ago that, you know, we've lost several people. One person just quit, went to work for Coda for a dollar more an hour. And if we would have been able to maybe be a little more competitive, we could have retained that person. So, you know, I'd like for this to be just as equal to the jails as we can. I don't want anything any more than what they're offered. I just would like, like to be able to treat my employees the same. Now, as far as the retroactive part, I don't know about that. I mean, I, you know, that's obviously up to the purview of the council, both for the pay and for the stipends. I don't know when you want to start it. I just know we're six months behind now. So whenever we can do it as quickly as possible, that would be great. But whatever you guys decide on, both the stipends and the veterans or the retention bonus as well as the, the pay increase, the fact they're going to get it is, is great.
Yeah, and I was just going by the discussion that we'd had at the prior meetings. That's the only reason I said that. I mean, obviously, the council could make a motion that would be affected how the motion's made and would be, would impact what we did with it, so. I would accept them. If there's not any further discussion, I'd accept the motion.
Mr. President, I move that we approve Salary Ordinance 2023 dash oh six, ROC 2023 dash oh four.
Is there, that's a motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? And like I said, I was only going by the document that I saw in front of me that, and I talked to auditors ahead of time. Unless it's different, it would go in effect tomorrow with being, have to be appropriation, unless you guys want to make something different, so. Any discussion on motion and second? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, council members, on behalf of the employees of the Juvenile Center, we really appreciate your effort and hard work in trying to help them earn a living wage. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Salary Ordinance 2023 dash seven, ROC 2023 dash six, Coroner Add Chief Deputy Coroner's Position. So this is one that had been tabled, so it comes back off the table here. We discussed it. If there's anybody here that would like to address us or answer any questions, you can come to the podium. Or if you're not, then we can, or we can have any discussion from, from the council or a motion.
Mr. President, let me say, the chief deputy coroner is a position that did exist some years back. Kevin Mays, a city police officer, was the chief deputy. He retired from the force and the position was never filled again. Curtis Lyle, our wonderful chief, our wonderful deputy, has been acting as the chief deputy for many years. I don't think you could have anyone who could fill that position more capably. And I believe that Officer Lautermel and Thompson will attest to his extremely good service. He does make every corner run. And I presume that he would fill that position. The salary is $21,477.
Page fifteen.
Is extremely low, but that's the coroner's office for you. They're the stepchildren of the county. And that is, I would be honored to make a motion to pass that, to recommend that we approve the Salary Ordinance 2023 dash oh seven, ROC 2023 oh six.
President Thacker?
Yes.
Is this his salary or is that a increase in the salary?
That is the salary for, currently, he is as a deputy coroner and this would be the new salary.
But with the new position, it's an increase on top of his current salary?
No, that would be what the salary would be. Now, it's on page 15 and it is, it says change one part-time deputy coroner position to chief deputy coroner. So he would have been making $6,000 and something. And there's a sheet on this, but that's the new salary would be. So the difference would be approximately.
That's not an increase to what he makes, the six or seven thousand. That would be the salary in the Salary Ordinance to pay that position.
For that position. And that would be paid prorata for this year, right?
Is that what it is?
So, so that is, as that is the proposed amount, then that would be the yearly amount going forward. But it would be, yeah, total. And so, and I see we have a, go ahead.
Curtis' present salary right now is $6,734.56. And with the salary, with Dr. Myers' base salary, he would receive 80% of that. So it would be the $21,744, because hers is 27,180. So it would be that, yeah.
So it'd be a change of approximately $14,000.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Six hundred thirty-two dollars.
Because she gets a stipend for being a physician, so her salary, yeah.
And, and if Curtis becomes a doctor, he would get 80% of that.
Yeah. I tried. You're working on that, aren't you, Curtis, in your spare time? I tried that, but it didn't work.
One, one thing I would recommend to Curtis, having known more about him and how many different issues he goes out with, the 200 out of the 220 or 40 or whatever, I would say that it would be nice to see you on the election ballot upcoming because I think from what everybody says, you do a fantastic job. So I do appreciate what you do. You're welcome.
And that would be a, from Mr. Norris's position, we can endorse candidates as council. And nor do we ask people to run against their bosses. But I mean, just say, I just want to clarify that before the paper prints that, the council. Thought that he should do that. But I do need a second. I have a motion, but I don't have a second at this time.
I'll second it.
Okay. I thought maybe that was your intro into second. The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion or statements that you want to make at this time?
I just, I want to clarify, because we say, say this a lot. And I know you've done a wonderful job and I hear highly about what your work is. I think it is important to remember, when we do this, we're doing this for a position. And I don't know the exact history of how this position went away, but it sounds like it is needed. So I think it's important that as we move forward, no matter who's in the office, that we make sure that this isn't one that, you know, years down the road, we're kind of doing this again, that we can try to stay as consistent as possible with that for the position.
That's a fair statement. Any other statements or comments before we go forward? Having a motion been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Okay, so we go to the next item on our agenda, which is is a, it is the Additional Appropriation 2023 dash 22, ROC 2023 dash nine, the Jail Staffing Increase. I believe that is on page 16. This is an action that we took at the last meeting. It passed. And so now, in order to do that, we have to have an appropriation. So if there's any discussion or if anybody would like to make a motion?
Any discussion? Okay. I will make the motion that we approve 2023 dash 22, ROC 2023 oh nine, Jail Staff Increases.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, be noted, one aye. With that being said, motion carries. So with the, the next one on is Additional Appropriation 2023 dash 23, ROC 2023 dash nine, Sheriff Additional Staff. And this was the, we had the staff increase and this is additional staff appropriation. And it, I believe, is on page 17. This is for the ones that we did the staffing for the security. Is that correct?
I guess it's to cover.
Page 17. If anybody has any questions on that or discussion? So when we did this one, this is the one that covered not the jailers, but the additional staff for security.
Correct, the core master security, or, sorry, building security.
Building security, yes. So this one was approved at the meeting and then now we're moving forward to do the appropriation for it.
I just, I have a question of clarification to make sure. Since these are. I just, I have a question of, of clarification to make sure. Since these are new positions, I guess this might be for Kara, um, will these be looked at as far as if it's in the right range and in line with what our other, um, security and type positions are?
Yeah. If they're currently the same title as somebody else, they'll just fit into that same group. If it's a new title, then it'll need to be brought up.
Okay. So, it could be like brought up just like anyone else?
Yeah.
Okay. That is my only question.
Okay. With that being, is there any other discussion? If not, I'd accept the motion for appropriation 2023-3, ROC 2023-9 on page seventeen.
So, moved?
Motion moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those favors signified saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next one is not an appropriation. It is a salary ordinance. This is one that we did not take action on at the last meeting. So, it is still under a salary ordinance. And this one is salary ordinance 2023-10, ROC 2023-9. And it was from the sheriff, and it was adding a secretarial position. So, I think this warrants a little explanation on my part why it's here. So, when, uh, when the sheriff's department brought this to us, they brought this to us and said currently, this is a position that has been paid out of the jail position, the zip, the jail budgeting, and then it wants to move it over to a secretarial. And, and actually, the, uh, individual, there again, as, as Councilman Thie said, this is for the position as adding secretary. It does not, it will not compensate and pay as much as what she's currently making, and she's fine with this. This is just really kind of cleaning up, uh, the, the budgeting of it. So, the person is aware of it, and it would go from twenty dollars to eighteen eighty-one, I believe, is the, is the difference. But it would be, if we pass this, then we'd still have to come back and do an appropriation. But just so you know, is, this, the secretary, it's, it's just changing the position, which fund they're being paid out of. It won't be adding any new people. It'd just be, uh, uh, cleaning up of that. So, this is something that we can take care of now, or we can take care of the budget, but that's what the, I just wanted to make sure. Set the, uh, set everybody so we know what we're talking about. And this is on page eighteen. And that's why it says that it's, uh, eighteen dollars and eighty-one cent. It's hourly rate, adding of the secretarial position. So, if there's any questions or conversation about this, discussion, if not, I would accept a motion.
I, I have a question.
Yes.
For Thacker, or actually for Cheryl, or Jim also. Should this not have been written as a change instead of an ask? Because as it's written, it's adding the secretarial position, but not removing the other position. So, essentially, unless something changed at budget time where that was removed, they could potentially leave that in.
You, you didn't remove a position. You brought the jailers up to the amount that was requested. That's what you did last week. This person has been being paid from the jails in Sheriff Uy, that has been being a secretary in the sheriff's budget, or actually in the sheriff's office.
Okay.
And so, this is to clean it up. It is adding a position to the sheriff's side, but it is cleaning it up.
It's paid out with different funds.
That's where they're working out of, out of a different location.
Okay.
And it will open up that jailer position. That's why you only added so many, because that-
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And I, President Thacker, I just would like to clarify too, that this, I, I hate to see anyone step back. I know, you know, she's aware of it, but, um, as long as it goes through the process of Baker Tilly and we make sure that, um, it's, and looks at, you know, if there's any changes that that could be addressed. But, um, I know, I've, we actually talked, uh, to the individual too, and I understand that they're aware. But just to make sure it gets looked at, just as any other position.
Any other, any other, no, I'll take a motion.
I move we approve 2023-10, ROC 2023-09.
I second it.
There's a motion seconded. Any further discussion for adding the secretarial position under, under the salary ordinance? All those favors signified saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're up to prosecutors now with salary ordinance 2023-11, ROC 2023-10, prosecutor amending the deputy prosecutor's base salary. Mr. Roberts is here. If anybody has any questions or, uh, we just, we talked about this under the last meeting, but, uh, or if you have any additional, anything else you have?
The only additional I have is, uh, Mr. Modest has apologized for not being here. He had another board meeting that he couldn't get out of to be present tonight.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Roberts? So, I would accept a motion at this time if, so, so.
Mr. President, I'm going to make a motion to refer this to the Budget Committee for consideration. We'll table it, um, until we bring it back to the full council. Um, I think, you know, we're, we're going to talk to the prosecutor's office about how to get things together so you guys can exist, um, and not starve to death. I know you're having some problems, and we're trying to work with you to get things worked out so we can live within the Baker Tilly report and not blow our brains out, or have somebody else blow them out. And then you'd have to prosecute that, and then be more work.
That'd be more work.
Be just one thing after another.
So, I have a motion. Is there a second?
Can I, we have some discussion?
Yeah, well, once we get a second, if we get a second. If we don't get a second, it dies. So, we have to have a second first, and then we can have discussion. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Now, is there any discussion? Councilman Lauda.
Yeah, it would just be nice to have some discussion before we had motions made. That's, I guess that's where we're at right now.
Yes.
Um, so when we say we're going to refer it to Budget Committee, what's the timeline for that? Are we talking about budget time during the summer? Is that the discussion?
I want you to bring it up on the quick.
I mean, what's the proposed timeline?
The motion was, uh, that it would be referred to the Budget Committee and tabled until brought back in front of this committee. So, at any time, if you table a motion, it either comes up the next meeting or at a time that a date is set. And so, that, to what I understand of her motion, which she made earlier, uh, it would be any, unless somebody brought it back up off the table, or if it, uh, through the budgeting process, that it would be discussed at that time.
During the budget process?
Yes, during the budget process.
So, we don't have a scheduled Budget Committee meeting between now and next month?
No, there would not be necessarily Budget Committee. The Budget Committee, uh, would form under, like you said earlier, during the summer months. We have a Budget Committee that's appointed, and they would start meeting with the, they're working with auditors to set up a timeline on that. But they have not scheduled their first meeting yet. Is that correct?
We-
But they could. But they could bring it up through the Baker Tilly. And part of the process is, is that this one, like the clerk one, or like the other one that has done that way, that we want to make sure that they have an opportunity to stay. And I, I don't, I don't disagree with Mr. Modest. He was passionate about their having trouble hiring. And as, just like we did with the clerk, clerks, we took, uh, part-time positions that were unable to be filled, and we, we converted them to full-time. And, you know, and so, at the, so they have that option to do anything like that if they choose to.
I would just say that, um, if we wait till summer, and no, no resolution till August or September, there's no telling what that prosecutor's office is going to look like and, and what that means for moving cases to the courts, and what that means for continued jail overcrowding. So, um, from my perspective, I think this needs to be handled a little bit differently than what the others are being treated at this point. Um, this is a very high-skill job. It's difficult to fill, and I think that should be taken into consideration.
Yes, I, I would agree with that. It is a high-skill position. And, uh, and what I would have been told from Baker Tilly, they do, when they do a comparison, they try to compare in fourteen different, uh, situations they've compared this to, and they've come up with that. And we've hired, we're in this process of, uh, Baker Tilly that we're trying to move through, and we're, we'll give the prosecutors, we'll have the opportunity in the first of April, as I think she said, the fourth, fifth, and sixth of April, Kara, that they could be there. And I'm not saying that their, their base pay is correct. I mean, we just, but we try to treat, each department is unique, and they're, and each department believes they're an important part of county government. And I, I don't, I wouldn't want to say one department's more important, but I do think this is a Any other comments or discussion? Yes, Councilman Thompson?
I work with prosecutor's office. I know they're busy. I feel bad waiting until budget and not doing anything until next year. I, if we were going to do anything, maybe table it till after Baker Tilly and come back and visit it next month.
Well, at any time, it can be brought back up, uh, Councilman.
Well, I thought the motion was to, uh, refer to the Budget Committee. Sorry.
It, it said refer to the Budget Committee or until brought back up in front of this body. Is what it's, that's what the motion is. So, at any time, and then, under departmental procedure, anybody can bring anything off the table at any time. The way we currently do it is, if nobody states a date on it, it comes up the next month automatically. And so, that's why it had been tabled now. And the other one was, this, this discussed to go to the budget, and that's the same motion that she has here. But there again is, if it does not pass, then it can, it, then we can, we'll be open for another motion, whatever that may be.
Could we have clarification on what the motion is?
Yes. Yes. Could you, could you repeat that motion?
I'm, I'm making a motion to refer this to the Budget Committee for consideration and to table it until it's brought back to the full council. Um, you know, we're, um, you know, I've, I've been talking, um, with the prosecutor's office, trying to, um, figure out how we can work, um, things out within the parameters of the Baker Tilly, um, study, uh, and, you know, not violate that study and, and get them what they need, uh, to, to keep the things moving along in the court system. And so, that's, and, and soon as we can work that out, then we'll, we'll bring it back to the council and, and get it. That's, that's what I would do at any time.
Yeah, that-
We've been, we've been trying to work with that and stay, you know, within the parameters of what Baker Tilly is about without violating it. I mean, that's what, that's why we paid for that study and not, and not go outside of it. We paid a lot of money for it.
Councilman Lauda?
Mr. Roberts, do you have open positions right now?
We do. We've had, uh, position open since those positions were granted to the prosecutor's office back in October of 2021. Uh, we still have an unfilled position. We have one deputy prosecutor that's currently interviewing, and, uh, we expect to get offers, uh, from an out-of-state prosecutor's office. So, we're going to have a second option, or a second position open in the near future, as expected. Um, I'll tell you right now, point blank, the morale in our office is the worst I've ever seen in twenty-three years. When you combine it with the societal aspects that have been dragging law enforcement through the mud, the blame game that's constantly being put on our office as being responsible for jail overcrowding, a thing that we actually have no control over. We don't control the crime, we don't control the bond, and we don't control the release of the defendants. And right now, the morale in our office is as low as I have ever seen it. And when I look at the people in our, in this office, and I sit there and I try to boost their morale, and I try to encourage them, and I try to say, we'll, we'll wait until next month, and hopefully the council will do something. And we'll wait until next month, and hopefully the council will do something. And I hear tonight that we're not going to do anything until the budget process, because let's be real, that's what's probably going to happen. And if we don't have anything until the end of the next budget process, we're looking at, by the time that that happens, two years of open positions in our office. This council recognized the need for these deputies based on the numbers that were presented to this council in 2021. Those numbers have only increased in that time period. You're asking my employees to do more work for a rate of pay that is not commensurate with other prosecutor's offices in the state. And I have provided that data to you on multiple occasions over the last three years, to let you understand that right now, in the state of Indiana, there is a shortage of attorneys. There have been two law schools that have closed down over the last five years. Out of a total of five law schools in Indiana, two of them are gone. That leaves three. That's a sixty percent of what used to be the regular number of attorneys coming into this state through the educational process. Competition for attorneys is higher. Demand for attorneys has never been higher. And salaries from deputy prosecutor's offices are reaching six figures on a regular basis. Now, there are a few counties that we are lower, that we are above. Marion County being one of them. Monroe County being another. But there are counties that neighbor us. Knox County, starting deputy prosecutors at seventy-seven thousand, and as Mr. Modest had explained to you, an experienced prosecutor that we interviewed and tried to get to come to Vigo County, we couldn't even touch the hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar salary that they were offering him.
And that's, I think those are fair statements. Can I, I'd like to ask a statement is, how long have you known those facts and figures that you just digested to me?
I've been presenting those figures to this council over the last three years.
And did you make this request at the last budget, last fall, last summer? Did you make a request for more additional staff or more money within the budget timeframe that you were, had offered to do?
We did not, because the-
You did not?
Because the two positions-
I just asked a question. I didn't ask for an explanation.
Okay.
Right? So, you want to tell us of what we're not doing, but I'm saying is, you had the opportunity, and you did not make a request in 2022.
May I explain why?
Yeah.
Okay. Because we had just been granted two positions. We felt like we asked for as much as we could and what was appropriate at the time. And the council was gracious enough to grant those two requested positions at that time. I feel that it would have been very inconsiderate of us and inappropriate to turn around four months after being granted those positions and start to, and start to ask for additional positions and additional salary increases without seeing what the situation was. But here we are now, almost a year after that budget process, on the door for a ne, the next budget process. It starts in March, Counselor. We usually get the email in the past in March stating, you're going to get these documents. We want them turned in by April, because we're going to discuss them in May and June. Right? So, the process starts in March. So, here we are a year later, and the situation is dramatically different. And the salaries have dramatically changed, because I've shown that across the state, the increase in the salaries that are being advertised. And just as importantly is that, the number of open positions throughout the state of Indiana. When I was providing numbers in 2021 to this council, there were approximately eighteen offices throughout the state of Indiana that were advertising open positions. When I provided the numbers to this council last year, when this was originally filed, there were thirty-six. And I believe there are still over thirty counties that are searching for deputy prosecutors right now. The demand has increased. The demand has changed. The salary requirements to attract people has changed. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
I'm not saying you're not doing your job. I just haven't had the opportunity, because Mr. Modest has been here, to stress my opinions on the urgency, and I appreciate the opportunity to express that.
And that's what I'm saying, is, yes, we start this process in March, but we have meetings every month except for December. But we didn't get a request until February. That's when we got the request, five weeks into the new budget, that we're just five weeks into that new budget, and that we got a request for half a million dollars. So, this committee, knowing that we have a Baker Tilly study, and if we say, other than there's some, eh, circumstances like a federal judge saying that we need to have more deputies, there is not a federal judge stating that we need more prosecutors.
I'm sorry, I disrespectfully disagree, Mr. Thacker. That's exactly what she said at that meeting with the, with the council members.
Have you guys presented that to us? That the federal judge mandated that we do this?
I didn't say mandate. I said, she said that it needed to happen.
Have we, and we haven't had that presented to us until right now. Is that correct?
Uh, there were a number of the members of the committee that were present at that meeting, sir.
But you guys have, that, my question is, did you present it to this council that the federal judge made suggestion or mandate, which, which I, I, I wasn't at that meeting?
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm, I'm asking, because I don't know that answer. But when we're, we get this, we do have a Baker Tilly study. And what I wanted to ask too is, are you guys, are you more important than the other departments that, that the Baker, that have to go through the Baker Tilly process?
I don't think we're more important than any specific department.
I don't either.
I've never said that.
I, I, I agree. I, I didn't say you did. But Mr. Loudermilk indicated that this is high-skill level, that we should treat it differently. And that's what I was just trying to, you know, discern.
And I stand by that statement.
Okay, that's-
I do. Because there is urgency in this, without question. And I'm familiar with the, the, the things that Rob is discussing, because I've been in those meetings. I mean, I, we can't help the fact that this has been going on.
I didn't, I wasn't invited.
It was, it was probably before you're on the council, quite frankly. This has been going on for quite some time. Um, you know, I can't help the fact that we have a lot of new members, and they're not all up to speed. That's not my, uh, responsibility- That's not my responsibility to get everybody up to speed. It's all about educating yourself, but I, I think if you have those conversations with the prosecutor's office and the judges, they'll be able to get you up to speed fairly quickly.
I, I have met with the, I have met with all judges, and I have met with the prosecutor.
And I appreciate that, Mr. Thacker.
And, and I am asking, that's why I'm asking those questions, because in those meetings with the judges and with the prosecutor, nobody ever told me that the federal judge recommended that we have more prosecutors.
I would be glad to sit down and explain to you exactly the logic that was within that meeting.
With that being said, is, that's why I'm held to this responsibility. We don't tell you how to do your job.
Nope.
We just tell you rather than not, we have money to give you.
And I said many times, I wouldn't want your job, so.
And when we made that decision, and then the budget, and I was on the budget then, and we, we voted to do it, but last year, I was not on the Budget Committee, but I did not see a request in, in last year's budget for the, for you, but then five weeks into the new budget, we get a, a appropriation. To me, appropriations should be only if we have something that's out of your control. And, and maybe this case is. And that's why I want, if you meet with Baker Tilly and they come back and they say, you know what, with your situation, your county, the base salary should be this, I think that makes a really strong argument, and that's going to be, in a matter of weeks, that you can have that opportunity to meet with Baker Tilly. And then that's what we've asked every other department to do is, if you don't like the Baker Tilly study, we have an appeal process. And so that's all I'm trying to do. I'm trying to treat everybody fairly.
Sure.
And that's not always good. It's just fair. You know, and so with this, is, I didn't create the Baker Tilly study, I didn't come up with what the base salary is, but I think you have an opportunity, and I think your department is probably better suited to anybody else to frame an argument.
Mr. Thacker, I emailed you a request previously for a copy of that study.
Yes.
I still have not received that. Could I get that?
Are, I, we have sent it to department heads. So Mr. Modest should have it.
I believe, I believe there were two spreadsheets sent to Mr. Modest. I'm asking for this study to know exactly what, you said that they, earlier, that they have looked at 14 different categories to compare salaries.
That was in a PowerPoint presentation that has been made available as well. And if you don't have it, I will ask Kara to send you everything that we have. We have sent out everything that this committee has.
I would appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. Kara, would you make sure to get that to Mr. Roberts? Yes?
Question. I, what I would like to see, and I, I understand the urgency we've seen, and I think, you know, the prosecutor had even said that we've seen an uptick in crime and the types of crimes that we're seeing. What I would like to see before we move forward though, is like what, where the Baker Tilly study falls compared to what you are requesting, even if we were to look at it, you know, in the next month, or we bring it up in the next month, that at least gives you time to look at where it is? And I think if it's within, you know, where we can work with, then we move on it. I mean, that's, that's my personal opinion, because I'm with you, I want to get things, you know, I, I, I understand there's still some kind of process of getting everyone moved through in a timely manner. But for me, again, kind of letting that process and see where they're at, and see where it falls compared to what you're requesting, I just hate to move on it and not have it be around that, that range.
And, and I think that's where we're at with this, is that we're, we're trying to give everybody this equal opportunity to do that. And, and, and I think that there is, you have a big part, you might not affect overcrowding, but you affect the charges that are made, correct? And, and plea bargaining, correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so that, so it, it does have a cause and effect.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying we have no role.
Yes, okay. Well, we do have a-
Could I address one last thing?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I mean, we're, we're going to have you up here for a while, others four of them.
Yeah. You indicated that you didn't receive a request until February. I would like to correct that misunderstanding.
Well, our, that's the first meeting that we could add.
That's the fir, that is the first meeting. However, there was a meeting that was called by the federal magistrate in November. A number of the members of the council were present for that meeting. The federal magistrate then instructed us to have a meeting amongst ourselves, which happened at the beginning of December. Councilwoman Wager was present for that meeting. After that meeting took place, and after discussions were held on what the different needs for the different departments were, we filed that request with the council in December, so that it could be appointed, or however the, however the council was going to do things for their business, and discussed at the January meeting, so that it could be heard in February.
Well, the January meeting is reorganization, it's not a, not a-
But it, but it, but it changes from year to year, so I wanted the request in before that meeting happened, which is exactly what we did. So, so when we're looking at the timing of all of this, this timing was spurred by that meeting with the federal magistrate. And as I said, I would be glad to talk with you, I think Councilman Wager, Loudermilk, there were a couple of others that were present for that meeting that could probably share with you specifically what the judge, judge said as well. But ultimately, I, I understand the position that you guys are in. I just don't want to see, and if, if this can be addressed right after the Baker Tilly, maybe as early as next month, that's fantastic. But waiting for an entire se, additional budget process is really not tenable for the situation.
And I, I don't think that's our intent either, but I think under, what we have to do is, we have to make, we have motions, motions can be made in multiple ways.
Sure.
And I think what Councilman Wager was trying to do was to do something that supported what we were trying to do with Baker Tilly, and treating everybody equally, and then being able to address those issues if they have outliers. Yeah, I would, I would absolutely welcome that conversation with you as well.
Sure.
We do have at hand though, for salary orders 2023-11, ROC 2023-10, we do have a motion and a second, and I can reread that motion if you'd like to hear it, or if there's any additional questions on that.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah, Vic, Nancy seconded it, or we didn't go into discussion until Mr. Loudermilk wanted to discuss it, and I asked that we have a second first, so.
Can I ask a question, sir?
Yeah, just a moment, I was just clarifying, that, so you have that as Nancy seconded? Okay.
Yes, Mr. Councilman.
Do we have an appeals process established?
With Baker Tilly?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. And Baker Tilly will be here April 4th, 5th, and 6th to discuss the process, and at that point, is, that's not necessarily a de, appeals process, that is an opportunity for each one, after the, after we've shared, under transparency, we've shared it with all department heads, then if they think there's something egregiously wrong before we adopt a plan, but once the plan's adopted, there's still going to be a, an appeal process within that.
But we do have a process in place, because I haven't, I've yet to see that.
Yeah, it's with Baker, it's through Baker Tilly. So that-
We do have it.
Yeah, and how that process, and I think if you remember just a little bit ago, Human Resources said she would be sending out forms to department heads, and so that they could put down what their concerns and are, and there will be, when the, Jada Camp was here under the PowerPoint, she said there is an appeal process and appeal form that will be made part of this process. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
President, President Thacker?
Yeah.
Could we make a motion on the 4th, if by that point in time, with the Baker Tilly, if we went through that at that point?
Well, that meeting is the sunshine meeting, and there, you, you don't necessarily make motions at the sunshine meeting, so it'd have to be at the 11th.
Okay.
At the 11th, you would be, you would have every, I'm looking at my phone to make sure I got the, the dates right, yeah.
Yeah, the 4th and the 11th.
The 4th is just the sunshine meeting, but then at the 11th, you are able to make any kind of motions that you choose at that time.
To clarify, so if we chose to bring it back up to the table, we could?
Yes, absolutely, at, at any time.
And I, I, I think that would be just, again, to see where it's at compared to, to where other studies are and see if you're in line for it, because I, that would allow us to act on it a little bit quicker.
Does that, is that somewhat better, Mr. Roberts?
Again, one, one month.
Yeah, I was going to say, putting a date on it, I think would help you.
We don't have applications rolling in, so one month versus two months.
Yeah.
It's just the longer we go out, like I said, our morale is at a low time limit.
No, I, yeah, I think, I think-
And that is my real concern, is we are going to continue to lose people. We've had, we've had the turnover of four attorneys in the last year and a half. I've never seen that amount of turnover in our office. We're about to be at five, and we can't fill those spots.
Okay.
Any further, any further?
I, I would like to make sure too, if we do have turnover, and, which it sounds like we are, that we get some information and data just to support your argument and idea of why they are leaving, whether it be, you know, are they just moving out of state? Are they, you know, because of salary? And I know you can tell me that, but if there's like some sort of exit process.
Sure. I can tell you this much, the deputy prosecutor that's currently interviewing, when I said if our salaries get increased to what we proposed, will that make a difference? She said absolutely. One of the deputy prosecutors that we lost last January, I said if our salaries get bumped up to the proposal, are you interested in coming back? She said I'm not, not interested. So I know for a fact, at least, the, the people that have come through our office, there's two positions right there that have made it clear that if the salaries are higher, they're not necessarily looking, or they're even willing to come back.
And Mr. Roberts, that's not a request that we asked, that we haven't asked by other departments as well.
Oh, yeah.
Because if we want to, if there's a, if there's an exit process that we can be shared on, it's not he said, she said, it's actually some-
I would, I would welcome that.
Yeah. So that's, I mean, we're not holding you to a higher standard than we are anyone else. I want to make sure. Is there any other discussion?
Nancy, you've been awful quiet.
If there's any other discussion, if not, because of the, the amount of debate on this, Mr. Auger, would you do a roll call vote, please? Or, do you have a question, Mr. Thompson?
No, I don't know. Did we repeat the motion?
Yeah, you, you can again, we can repeat it again.
I make a motion to refer this to the Budget Committee for consideration and to table it until it's brought back to the full council. And so we can call it up when we wish to call it up.
So if we can, yes.
Yeah, so I just want to clarify one thing. Any council member has the ability to pull an item off the table that's been tabled at any time.
Yes.
So what Vicki is doing does not prohibit one of the council members taking that step, and I would just urge you to consider that at the sunshine meeting, so that the necessary paperwork to effectuate that decision can be prepared for the following. But the fact that the motion states a specific time, that just means that's when it has to be brought back up. It does not take away any other council member's right, the thought being that, you know, you might be, this vote might be the same, to do the same thing that you wanted to tonight, but with different circumstances, pulling it off the table, it could produce a di, different vote, so.
And if it could, I'd echo on that, is, tabling a motion is much more suitable than if you vote it down, then it cannot come before this body for another year. So what it's showing is, it's showing the willingness to, to address the issue as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to-
Yes.
Provide assurance that approval of Vicki's motion would not prevent it from being brought back up if that were the council's prerogative.
Yes.
That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Auger.
Mr. Loudermilk?
Nay.
Ms. Alsa? Ms. Wager?
Aye.
Ms. Stees? Mr. Norris?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Nay.
Mr. Thacker?
Aye. Motion carries. So now we go to salary orders 2023-12, ROC 2023-10, prosecutor adding deputy prosecutor percentage increase. Mr. Modest spoke of this on, on, and gave us a spreadsheet on it. I don't have that spreadsheet on me here. Maybe it's in this one, let me look ahead. And this was one that did for specialized courts, cases, that they would then be paid at a, a higher percentage.
Ultimately, the request to increase the salaries over the base salary is ultimately in conjunction with the increase in salaries. Right now, there's already a percentage process for that in place. And so based on the tabling that just happened on the salary increase ordinance, we would just ask that this be treated consistently with that.
Fair enough. Does anybody have any questions, comment, or motion?
I would like to make a similar motion to refer it to the Budget Committee for consideration to table it until we can bring it back to the full council.
Okay, is there a second on that motion? Motion been made in second, is there any discussion?
I, I, do you like this? I mean, as far as looking at, I think some of the cases are definitely more involved, but I think the appropriate time is, we do it the same altogether with the other one, because we just note from some of those cases, some of them were much more involved, obviously.
And this hasn't, this has not, just for everybody's education, this has not been addressed in the Baker Tilly study. This is, like you said, it's something that's already existing, and it wouldn't need necessarily that, it just really needs, it just needs to go in conjunction with the base salary.
Yes.
I, I agree with your statement there. Any other discussion? All those, motion been made in second, no further discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Please record, one nay. Okay, the next one is for prosecutors, is for salary orders 2023-13, prosecutor add a, add the position, three positions. Salary orders 2023-13, ROC 2023-10, the addition of three deputy prosecutor positions. Mr. Roberts?
Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Roberts, or any discussion at this time? Not except a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to refer this to the Budget Committee for consideration, table this until it can be brought back to the full council.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion been made in second, is there any discussion? Motion been made in second, no discussion, is there, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. So the last one for prosecutors is salary orders 2023-14, ROC 2023-10, prosecutor add two positions of legal, two legal secretary positions.
Mr. Roberts, I believe one of these was for a community service, community hours to keep track of it because it was cut, was it from state funding or exactly?
No. For decades, Community Corrections has been responsible for both arranging locations for people to do their community service hours, as well as monitoring their completion and compliance with those court orders for community service hours.
So one of those secretarial positions will do just that, or is it both of them?
Well, it will, we won't be actively trying to promote and bring in certain agencies. I, I, I don't think that we have the resources or the, I don't think that's appropriate for us to try and do that. But somebody needs to monitor their compliance and make sure that those hours are being done. I've already contracted with, had our office contract with somebody from Indiana State University to design a web portal that will allow whoever this is, whether it's somebody in the courts or somebody from our office, which I don't think anybody else is, is asking to step up and do this right now. So let's just assume it's somebody from our office. They will be responsible for taking the court orders that order community service, putting that into our web portal's database for the defendant's name, cause number, how many hours, and when those hours are due. Any agency that has someone come in will then have their own login process to that portal where they can put in the defendant's cause number, their name, and how many hours they completed that day. Then as they reach that target number of hours, it will send a notification to our secretary that says this person has completed their hours, we'll file that notice with the court, court knows they're all done. If they hit their due date and they haven't finished those hours, that notification will then be sent, we can file the notice with the court and/or a revocation violation, whatever we would need to do, given the, given the circumstances at that time. So, so I'm trying to bring this process into the 21st century, rather than the, the paper process that it's been in the past, and in so doing, I think that, I don't think that it's going to require a full-time position, so that person I would anticipate will have additional responsibilities within our office. But there are certain statutes, such as the drunk driving codes, that mandate a number of community service hours, or in the alternative, people spend days in the jail.
Yes.
So I think I know what everybody's preference is there.
Yes.
And so that's why we're attempting to be part of the resolution and not, not just drag this out.
About how many cases, you mentioned drunk driving specifically, but is it common maybe for first offenders, or, you know, people that get like the volunteer hours?
Yes, so a standard, a standard misdemeanor OVWI resolution involves 40 hours of community service. If they had a really high blood alcohol level, maybe 80, if they, if it's a second offense, then it's 240, and it just goes up.
Connects up from there.
So, and then city court, matter of routine resolution on cases there is 40 hours of community services.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Roberts, also with that, I know she was asking, that's one of the two. The other one, legal secretary position, was it in conjunction with, with the additional staffing? If we got additional staffing, you needed more sec, another secretary, or was it independent of that? I wasn't sure.
To a certain extent, it's, it's dependent. Obviously, if we get the additional attorneys, we're going to need some staff that, that is handling some of their paperwork. But what we've also found, and, and part of the reasoning, the request for the additional staffing is that full-time person handling juvenile cases, working the juvenile investigations. And there needs to be a legal secretary that handles those, the juvenile paperwork full-time. There was a, kind of a transition within the last two years. Most of that paperwork used to be handled by the juvenile court, as far as the initial paperwork, the filing of charges and, and drafting of documents. That was handled by the juvenile court staff and the clerk's office. When they went to the automated electronic filings process, they then included a module in the prosecutor case management system that's provided by the state through IPAC for the processing of all of that paperwork. So we now should be doing that, rather than those, those other entities having that responsibility. And what we're finding is, it's turned out to be a lot more work than we expected. And so that's ultimately the goal, to make sure we're able to meet the community service hour supervision and have somebody that's primarily responsible for the juvenile court paperwork.
I think that's, for my own, and I think it's on our page 23, we're just trying to make sure if, if we are able to do this, if it would benefit, if we need one or two at this time. I didn't know if it was, that's why I asked the question, if it was dependent on the other. And if you, if your take is that you need two at this time.
I think the, the need for one is immediate, the need for that second is in conjunction with the additional staff.
Okay. That, that, that helps us. I mean, that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to do something if we can, possible.
And I, I haven't heard it discussed at length in the, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I was at a few previous, prior to that. Part of the request is, we are going to a more automated system in the Child Support Division. Title 4D invest system is coming online, they're doing trainings for that right now. And in evaluating the manpower that we think that that's going to free up there, we believe that we can just shift one of those legal, Title 4D caseworkers to a legal secretary position. So we're not actually asking for the county to provide two new positions, but we are just asking for that transfer over of one of them. Again, we want to do this as, as efficiently and as economically as possible. We think that that new invest system is going to make things more automated, the documents are going to be more automated. We know some of the changes that are coming, and it's going to increase our efficiency there. So obviously, the sooner we can make that change for the one that's absolutely needed, the better.
Any other questions or discussion?
That's not what I saw in your request. You asked for juvenile legal secretary for that juvenile prosecutor, and an office administrator slash community service coordinator. When you sent me that email.
Yeah.
So you asked for two positions. I didn't see where you asked for one to be moved for Title 4D. In the email I got, when you sent me that long email, everything that you wanted.
It's in the letter that, that the request was in, I know that. I'm pretty confident. If for some reason that did not make it to you, I apologize, and that would explain why it hasn't been brought up extensively previous to today.
So if we do that from the Audit Department, if we make a motion here, if we have a motion for one or the other, we would just need to do the appropriation for the appropriate department at the next meeting, is that, would that suffice? Or do we have to do a different advertisement?
Well, you need to do a different advertisement, because that's only for additional appropriations. You'd just be doing an adjustment to the salary ordinance as to where something's been paid from.
So the motion, if we have a motion here, they, they just need to make it, so it's for salary, then the next month we would have to have the appropriation. Did I get that right?
If you do one of these, yes.
Yeah, okay.
If you do one additional, you'll need to do an appropriation for that position.
Yeah, okay. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I think I will, I'm just trying to figure out how to word this. If I'm wanting to approve just one of those, Cheryl, do I just need to say that in my motion? Okay.
Amend the ordinance.
Amend the ordinance, okay. I would like to make a motion to amend salary ordinance 2023-14 to add one legal secretary position to support the community service hours and other needs that arise.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Motion been made in seconded to provide one additional, amend the salary ordinance to have one legal secretary for community.
Sorry, correct.
Services, community services. And in the course of this, is if you see the need to use it for other, that's, you know, it's the legal secretary position.
Yes, thank you.
So is there any discussion at this time? Motion been made in second, all those in favor signify saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
That was to amend.
Yes, yes, that is correct. I, I was looking ahead, thank you, I got ahead of myself. Thank you. So the motion now has been, the motion has been amended, I would need a motion to, yes, to have one legal secretary under that ordinance, 2023-14.
I'd like to, I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2023-14 as amended.
I will second.
Motion been made in seconded to amend, or to make the motion as amended, 2023-14 adding one legal secretary position. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Please keep us updated on how that goes once it's streamlined.
Hang there, you're, you're up on the, on the first new business, so if you would. So now we're moving, no, no other in that category, we're going to move to new business? And under new business, we have our first is additional appropriation ordinance 2023-21 seized asset for new equipment. And that is on page 25. Is any, yes, Councilman?
I don't know. Do we still have one more?
I believe so, the additional appropriation.
I did, jumped right over it. I, thank you. Thank you, that. So I don't see, yeah, step aside, there's, so I did miss that. Additional appropriation 2023-14 ROC 2023-11 juvenile court staff increase. This was CASA, it was approved, and now we need to do the appropriation for it. It is on page 24. Yes. Is that the right one?
President, President Thacker.
Yes, it is, 24, yes.
I believe if, and then I guess this is for Mr. Wright, we need to amend the additional appropriation first for half of the amount, is that correct?
Are you on the last one?
The additional appropriation ordinance 2023-24, which was the juvenile court, that's, that's what you referenced, is that correct?
No. No, we need, we need to. Yes. But not on, but not on 2023-24, that's on page 24, but $114,080 is the whole amount that we need to appropriate. That's CASA.
Okay.
Yeah, so that one is, that would be, that one I'd either, we have discussion or need a motion to accept the, the whole appropriation.
If there's no discussion, I'll make a motion to accept ordinance 2023-24, I need to say the amount.
Yes.
They're in the amount of $114,080.
Motion made, is there a second? Motion made seconded, is there any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And all those opposed? Motion carries. Sorry about skipping over that. Too many scribbles on one sheet of paper. Now, if no other business than this, go to new business. Mr. Roberts, we have here additional appropriation ordinance 2023-21 seized assets for new equipment, that is on our page 25, and it is for an amount of $65,000. Does anybody have any question for Mr. Roberts? It doesn't have the breakdown that we had at the other meeting, but we don't need that at this time. If anybody has any questions, if not, I accept the motion.
I move that we approve appropriation ordinance 2023-21.
Motion been made in second, is there any discussion?
President Thacker.
Yes.
I'm going to abstain from this vote.
Okay.
President Thacker, I am as well.
Okay. Do you, they don't, there's no explanation needed, they, they can abstain from a vote. This one will be, we still need four to pass, whether they abstain or not. So with that being said, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? It carries. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. So the next one we have, thank you, Mr. Roberts. Next one we have, under new business, is additional appropriation ordinance 2023-25, and the original request was under Lit Public Safety for Mental Health of America, is on our page?
26.
26. And we do have Myra here, if anybody has any questions for her? Is there any discussion?
I think, I think there's been some discussion too, or at least some consideration by a few of us, and maybe we just need to discuss it here as to whether a better source of funding for this would be from ARPA versus Lit. I think I was pretty public that I support moving forward regardless. I think it's a need in our community. I think, you know, on multiple levels, the diversion center and the housing part of it. But I don't want to make a motion without knowing that there's potential support to move forward in the best way possible.
Yeah, I think we had some really good discussion on this before, and, and now we're up for the appropriation. The, I did ask council if we wanted to amend this to where a different source of funding. If we do that, we have to, we would have to have a separate motion. It would have to be either voted down, or, or we, we could, to, in order to change the funding source. So, I mean, I think this is a, a really great opportunity. How we handle this opportunity, I think, will, will reflect on us. So if there's anybody else that would like to have a comment on it, appreciate that.
I thought, I'm just looking, I thought there was two separate, was it just the $500,000?
Yeah, so what, what was in front of us, and was presented at the last meeting was, the request was for us for $500,000. There was a separate email and communications from the commissioners, said that the city would look to appropriate $250,000, the commissioners would look to do $250,000.
$250,000, got it.
But all that is contingent on what we do here with the, the five, the request was for 500. There was some concerns and some dialogue about how was this divvied up, and so that was, that was also, but all this is on the, open for discussion. David?
I think we left it last week. Were you going to bring letters of support?
I brought, so there were several of us that were meeting. I, I would, I don't know that I can ask for this to be tabled, but I would appreciate it if we could table this for a couple more meetings. I need to figure out, as Todd said, there might be other available funding. And I need to, I'd like to have a chance to review that first, if you're all agreeable to that.
So I, this is, this is why we have discussion. So if you've heard from Mrs. Wilkie, so what is the appetite of this council?
Would, Ms. Wilkie, would it be reasonable if we just table it until April? Will you update us in April as to where we're at?
Especially if that's enough time.
Okay, because again, I, I don't want us to lose, my biggest thing is I don't want to lose the funding opportunities that we have through the grant. And I don't know.
I think, I think we're all aware that the city council did table it as well, so I think that's germane to our discussion, not that we have to follow anybody else's lead, but it's just good to be well-formed, so.
Oh, I just decided, where did I put it? What's the motion? I will make, I will make a motion to table additional appropriation ordinance 2023-25 until the April meeting.
Okay.
Second.
So motion, yeah, it's just, it is a motion, so it has to be seconded, but seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is tabled till April as stated in the motion. So the next one we have is additional appropriation 2023-26 ARPA Grant Fund, and it has been withdrawn, so we, there's no action need to be taken there. And I would say, at this time, is that we do have some paperwork we'll have to sign. And I have, I am going to ask that in the future meetings, we put the public comment to the end of this meeting, so we get some people, like at church, they stay for the whole thing, and if they want to talk. And so that's a, an option I'm going to take on. But the next thing we have is honorary resolutions, none of those, and resolutions related to fiscal policy of the council, none of those, no appointments, and so I would be open for adjournment.
Can I say something?
Yes.
I forgot, I'm so sorry. I forgot at the beginning with comment from council at the beginning to talk about the decision that was made today by the commissioners moving forward with Mill Dam, and also potential funding for the Parks Department. I think a lot of people know that's something very near and dear to my heart, it was a very difficult decision, and I felt like there was good discussion that helped us move forward and, and understanding where we need to go. Something I asked the council to consider as we move forward, there's been an initial request to support the park and the resources. But I hope, one thing I think the North End, Vigo County would like to see is really due to the historical significance of the area, and just the lack of improvement over the years, that we continue to move forward and potentially have some other sources, whether it be grants or other things moving forward. I just ask the council that we make sure to keep that in our thoughts as we move forward. And also the Parks Director as well, I've already been talking to Adam Grossman about it, and in that process. I just want to make sure that we put that out there publicly.
So from what I discern from that is Marie's willing to volunteer to head up any group as well.
I will.
And that's what I, was my comment for, that so. I also have another comment here.
And I wanted to say, our ISU men's Sycamore team is going to be playing Saturday down in Daytona Beach in the CBI tournament, and they are number one seed. Keep them in your thoughts and prayers and bring them home champions, because they are champions.
Any other comments, questions, concerns before accepting motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.
We need this.